Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Lionel, Vice Chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the January 10th, 2023 zoning board meeting. I'm filling in for Mary Ellen McKay, Chair, who cannot be with us tonight. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashville City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom with the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at nashuanh.gov/AgendaCenter, Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes each. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. City staff will monitor a timer visible on the room monitors and Zoom. The Chair will notify speakers as time is expiring. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the Raise Hand option, which can be found under Reactions if you're on a computer, or the More option on a menu. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the Lower Hand option when done. Also, please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. The Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. And we have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days of the day's decision. Should the Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel. I'm the Vice Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. We have Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. We also have the following alternate member in attendance, Mr. Jay Mankara. And I don't see anybody on Zoom. In addition to the Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, who's the Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, Zoning Coordinator, and I don't see Matt Sullivan in the room. Okay. So let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. All right. Jack Courier.
Present.
J.P. Boucher.
Present.
Rob Shaw.
Present.
Jay Mankara.
Present.
And I'm Steve Lionel. I am present. Let's see. We have one, two, three, four. We have four full Board members and one alternate, so Mr. Mankara will be participating in the voting for all of the cases. So we have no excess people. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. I will now read the first case into the record. Owner: Darian Guzman. Applicant is Daniella Guzman. Address: 60 Blossom Street. Sheet 94, Lot 85, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-47B to allow a major home occupation for an in-home nail salon. This is in the RV zone, Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present the meeting?
I'm in the zone, this is Kate.
Is there somebody on Zoom to present this case?
Oh, right there.
Oh, yeah, please step up to the lectern, and you have 15 minutes, and walk us through what you'd like to do.
So I would like to open a...
Excuse me, let me see. Please give your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Daniella Guzman. I live in 60 Blossom Street.
Okay.
I'm here today because I want to open a business at my home, so I can do nails. And I have all the parking. We have a four-car garage, so we have all the parking. I know that won't be a big deal for anybody in the neighborhood. What else? I'm only taking one client a day, I mean, a day at a time, so it won't be hectic, it won't be noisy. What else can I say? I think that's it. I didn't have much to say.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
Your clients could park seemingly on the street or in the driveway.
Yep, in the driveway or the street.
Either or, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of parking in the driveway. It's pretty big, and in the front of the house, there's two spaces available, so...
And I was just curious, is this sort of like a licensed sort of business to do manicures?
Yeah, I have...
Is it regulated by the state, or is it just a... I was just curious, not really relevant to this application, but I just didn't know about this sort of business.
So I just got my manicure license. So my plan is to do everything the right way. And so, yeah, all the steps I have to take, I'll take, comes to like State Board and, you know, any inspections that have to be done in that area and all that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Shaw.
This is pretty much for the record, because I know it's in your application, but there's the Major Home Occupation affidavit, which lists 10 different items, and you've signed it basically from that testimony and thinking that you're able to adhere to these stipulations or requirements.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just about to do that. Okay, very good. Any more questions from the Board?
Recording in progress.
Okay. All righty, fine. Okay, is there anybody here in the auditorium who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Ms. Guzman, you may sit down for an hour now. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak?
There was a hand up.
Oh, there was a hand up? Oh, please step... No, you can sit, you can sit down. You'll have your chance later, if necessary. Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
Rosemary Johnson, 58 Blossom Street. So I'm literally the next-door neighbor. I'm here to support Daniella's endeavor. She literally has a double lot. The second lot is a driveway and garages, so there's plenty of parking. And if someone parks in front of the house, well, when people visit me, they park in front of the house, so I totally support her doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody in the audience? Mr. Falk, did you have...
I was just gonna say that the Board did receive an email from Helen Vaca at 47 Gilliman Street stating that she's in favor.
Thank you.
I think it was emailed to everybody.
Do I have that? I don't remember.
I don't, I don't, I didn't see that.
It's just a one-sentence email that states that she's in favor.
Okay, and the name was again?
Helen Vaca.
Helen Vaca.
Of 47 Gilliman Street.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anybody in the audience who has questions, comments, or concerns about the application? Application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Yes, I fully support the application, and I feel that it, the five special, the five criteria for a special exception, I've been met.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I likewise support it, and I don't have an issue with it. Yeah. It's presented.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
I also support the application.
Mr. Courier.
I also support the application. The only concern I had, only for a moment, was parking, but just looking even before seeing the site, just looking at the application, it's clear that, to me, that I don't think there'll be any sort of parking problem with this business.
Thank you. And I also am in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Darian Guzman, owner Daniella Guzman, applicant of 60 Blossom Street, Sheet 94, Lot 85, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-47, Section B, to allow a major home occupation for an in-home nail salon in the RV zone, Ward 6. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal systems. We find that the special regulations are fulfilled. And those regulations are the Major Home Occupation affidavit, which was, again, affirmed by the applicant. We find it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. The discussion of the motion. Ready to vote? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mankara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor at five to nothing. Congratulations, your special exception has been approved. Remember, there's a 30-day window of appeal. If somebody would care to do that, please contact the Planning Department if you have questions. And good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for coming in and taking your time and helping out of, you know, some of this, and we, like, appreciate it, so, thank you.
Okay, moving on to case number two. Owner is J.K.S. Realty LLC and L.J.J. Realty LLC. Address is L. Fairmount Street and L. Hutchinson Street, L means land. Sheet 62, Lot 100, and Sheet 127, Lot 131, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-114 and 284 to encroach into the 40-foot wetland buffer at two separate locations to construct access driveways for a four-building, 183-unit multifamily development. This is in the RC zone, Ward 4. This special exception was originally approved in February 26, 2019, at the ZBA meeting, and there was a two-year extension approval granted in December 8, 2020. I'm going to make a comment that our discussion tonight is only about the request to encroach into the wetland buffer. Other issues will not be topical for tonight. So, sir, please give your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes to walk us through the application.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Board, good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. I am Andy Prohlman, attorney with Prohlman here in Nashville. I am here on behalf of J.K.S. Realty and L.J.J. Realty with respect to the subject properties. Mr. Vice Chair, I have two handouts for the Board, if I may.
Yes, sure.
It's original Conservation Commission approval and our original wetland soil scientist's letter to Mr. Tampozzi.
Thank you. Thank you. There's an onsite appearance. All right. Thank you.
Hang on a second. Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, Andy Prohlman. We are simply requesting an extension, a two-year extension of the wetland special exception that was approved originally in 2019, and again, extended in 2022. We have vacant land that we're talking about at the end of Hutchinson Road and just off of Baldwin Street, and in between Hutchinson, Baldwin, and the Broad Street Parkway. Okay, thank you, thank you, Carter. We do have a plan up, and nothing's changed since the original approval was approved by this Board and approved by the Conservation Commission. The proposed roadway that is going to access the development is the same. It cuts through two wetland areas, and we have approximately 3,000 square foot of buffer impact, which is the very same buffer impact that we had in 2019. The, you can see, we have, the Conservation Commission has five stipulations that we would carry forth with this extension, if the Board is so inclined to extend. We continue to meet the criteria for the special exception, and this site is delayed because it's a very complex site. There's a reason why it hasn't been developed in Nashville all these years. It's challenging to get to, it's challenging to develop, the topography makes it that much more difficult, and there's access issues, especially toward the end of the project, as it may or may not tie into the Fimble Door and Brock's, excuse me, not Brock's, the Tannery property, right? That may happen, that may not happen, but all those factors create delay, add in COVID over the past two years, and it's been very difficult to get this project off the ground. So that's our request to the Board. We, I'm happy to answer any questions. We believe we continue to meet the special exception criteria, and I saw that there were some comments from neighbors, and this project has not yet been gone to the Planning Board, an application has not been submitted to the Planning Board, and that's the place where people can weigh in on traffic and density and all the issues that the Planning Board tackles. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Not seeing any? Okay.
Thank you.
You may have a seat at the moment. Okay, again, I will remind the public that we are discussing the wetlands crossing, wetlands buffer crossing only, and so please keep your comments to that. So is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing anybody? Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any? Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any there? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing. Oh, yes, we do have letters, excuse me. These letters don't involve the topic of our, of the application. This is a letter from Dionysios Dendromiras, 22 Hutchinson Street, and he is worried about increased traffic. Again, as Attorney Prohlman said, that is a question for the Planning Board. And there, let's see, I have another. This letter is from Daniel Van Kalken at 55 Baldwin Street, and he said, simply asking for this meeting to be rescheduled, which it is not. I didn't see, are there any other ones? I don't think so. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Well, there's nothing really to respond to, because there's been no, no issues raised regarding the wetlands crossing. I think that would be appropriate. Okay. So closing the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I see no change to meeting the criteria, and I support again for this application.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
I agree. I see no changes in the conditions that would warrant any different decision.
Mr. Courier.
Likewise, I was part of the original decision four years ago and supported it then, feeling, in summary, that the wetland crossing was, or the work was outweighed by the benefit from it, and nothing changes in this application. Other than four years have gone by, I don't think anything significant has changed in the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Boucher.
As I also stated, I also supported the application in 2019 and still support the application, and I don't feel that anything has really changed.
And I also supported the application both in 2019 and in the extension for 2020, so I support this application today. Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, J.K.S. Realty LLC and L.J.J. Realty LLC, the address being L. Fairmount Street and L. Hutchinson Street, Sheet 62, Lot 100, and Sheet 127, Lot 131. Request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-114 and 284 to encroach into the 40-foot wetland buffer at two separate locations to construct access driveways for a four-building, 183-unit multifamily development. This is in the RC zone. It was originally approved at the 2/26/19 ZBA meeting, and a two-year extension of approval was granted 1/12/2020. The special exception is listed in the table of uses, as just noted in the description. There is no indication of any undue traffic congestion or unduly impairing pedestrian safety by the specific part of the application. There is no overloading of public water, drainage, or sewer, or any other municipal system. By testimony, the special regulations are fulfilled and will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. And again, the criteria from the Conservation Commission, the five stipulations will continue to also be enforced in as part of this approval. So with that, I move to approve this special exception.
And Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Discussion of the motion? Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mankara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor at five to nothing. The special exception has been extended. As always, there's a 30-day window of appeal, but you're familiar with that.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Case number three. Owner is Stephen Fritz, address 105 Vermont Avenue. Sheet 4, Lot 25, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width. 24 feet permitted, 40 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 16 feet of recently added driveway width. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 7. See some?
Now that we have six extra members, we need to clarify who's gonna vote on...
Oh, Mr. Joshua Nehealy showed up, an alternate. Let's see. So I would say that Mr. Nehealy can vote on this one, and Mr. Mankara can take a breather. Thank you, I wasn't paying attention. Okay, so I see we have somebody to present the case. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Hi, my name's Stephen Fritz. My address is 105 Vermont Ave. I'm here because I'm trying to get a variance for my driveway. I had installed a little over a year ago. A company did it. There was no permit pulled. I didn't think there was an issue until a few months ago. Now I'm just trying to rectify the situation. I was made aware that my driveway isn't, is only supposed to be 24 feet, so that's pretty much why I'm here. There are other driveways in the area that exceed 24 feet, and I've attached some pictures. I believe they're up there. That's my driveway that's on the screen right now. And then there is, if you look at Exhibit B, it's 3 Connecticut Ave. That's one of my neighbors that's, you know, I can throw a rock at their house, and that driveway is also well over 24 feet. Me having the driveway doesn't, it doesn't affect the value, the property value of any of the neighboring houses. If anything, it's gonna increase it. There's no harm to the general public or individuals by allowing my 40-foot-wide driveway, and the benefit to me is that I'm a plumbing contractor, and I'm able to park my work vehicles on the driveway without interfering with the use of my driveway or access to my garage. That's pretty much it.
Questions from the Board? I have a couple of questions. First of all, what is the name of the paving contractor you used?
You know, I'm here just to try and rectify the situation. I'm not trying to cause an issue for anyone else, so I would, I'd rather not give that information.
The reason I'm asking is that, you know, this is not the first time that we've had a, an applicant come to us after having a driveway widened past what the ordinance said, and either the paving contractor told them that no permit was needed, or didn't tell the homeowner that a permit was needed. I know that some paving contractors are upstanding about that and will tell the homeowner that, but some won't, and I'm just trying to figure out who it is that's, doesn't know their business.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm just trying to fix, you know, what was wrong, but I'm not trying to cause any issues for anyone else.
And if you, the, if your variance application is denied, who's gonna be responsible for removing the excess?
I am.
I see. Any further questions from the Board? Mr. Boucher.
Just trying to understand, due to your property, the original driveway was, how wide was the original driveway?
It was, it was less than 24 feet. You could, it was like, you know, one car wide.
Okay, that's kind of what I gathered from looking at some of the older photos. And then, did you ever have a challenge with, you know, your driveway is not really shallow to the street, but I'm just curious whether or not, when you have larger cars, whether or not you'd be almost into the street if you were parking two vehicles head in?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, okay.
It's tight, there's, yeah, there's just not enough space to fit two vehicles, you know, behind one another.
Right. Okay, it's kind of what, I was just wondering, because I knew, you know, if you have real small cars, but I think the average car, or if you had a truck or something, I was just curious to hear from you.
Yeah, I have work, work vehicles and, you know...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Courier.
Just curious, like, if, was there a consideration perhaps for driveway, say, on the right side of the garage? Like, just driving around your neighborhood, I've always liked your neighborhood. I don't go down there much, but there's a chance to drive around. I mean, I see some folks have some extra cars parked, like, on the right side of the garage, like, back further, so it looks to me, not by having a tape measure, but like the 24-foot width is maintained, but there's more parking than this, just what's, like to say, right in front of the garage of, you know, some of other homes in the area. I didn't know if you would consider that, or if...
Um, it was, it was less than 24 feet. You could, it was like, you know, one car wide.
Okay, that's kind of what I gathered from looking at some of the older photos. And then, did you ever have a challenge with, you know, your driveway is not really shallow to the street, but I'm just curious whether or not, when you have larger cars, whether or not you'd be almost into the street if you were parking two vehicles head in?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's tight. There's, there's, yeah, there's just not enough space to fit two vehicles, you know, behind one another.
Right. Okay, it's kind of what, I was just wondering because I knew, you know, if you have real small cars, but I think the average car or if you had a truck or something, I was just curious to hear from you.
Yeah, I have work, work vehicles and, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Courier?
Just curious, like, if, was there a consideration perhaps for driveway, say, on the right side of the garage? Like, just driving around your neighborhood, I've always liked your neighborhood. I don't go down there much, but there's a chance to drive around. I mean, I see some folks have some extra cars parked, like, on the right side of the garage, like, back further. So it looks to me, not by having a tape measure, but like, the 24-foot width is maintained, but there's more parking than this, just what's, like, say, right in front of the garage of, you know, some of other homes in the area. I didn't know if you would consider that or if that's a possibility or not a possibility on your property.
I mean, with the, with the distance that it is right now, there's really not any extra distance, even within the 24 feet, to be able to park anything on the side. You know, maybe you can go a couple of feet beyond the garage, but not enough to actually park vehicles next to it.
Okay. Thanks.
So just to, sorry, just to clarify, so what's on the side of the garage has prevent, would have prevented you from adding a, extending your driveway along the right side of the garage?
Um, I mean, my yard, but nothing really.
You currently have some dumpsters parked there.
I do. It's, it's getting, it's scheduled to get removed tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. You may sit down.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? We did get a, a letter from Ron Parker of 101 Vermont Avenue, who has no objection to the additional driveway. And he says this allows, this additional width allows for family and visitors to park their vehicles in the driveway as to not obstruct the roadway of Vermont Avenue and Massachusetts Avenue. Mr. Fritz's property is located at the corner intersection of these two streets. Without the use of this driveway, family and visitors will be forced to park on the street. This would have an impact on regular traffic off of Vermont Avenue, moving onto Mass Avenue, and could obstruct the view of other vehicles or pedestrians in and around this particular corner. Therefore, stating previously, I have no objection to the variance request. My wife, Sally Fraser Parker, also concurs with this action and has no objection to the variance request. So that's the only letter I have, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the application. I always seem to lead off on these, but I guess, you know, oftentimes I think the board seeks or tries to help out an applicant to kind of pull out, you know, hardship in the property. You know, I'm thinking of the case recently right near Exit 5 on Kinsey Street, where there was a fellow who had paved a second driveway, making it much more in excess of 24 feet, because there was already a driveway from when the house was built probably 50 years ago. But he, that driveway was on the backside on a quiet street. And so the homeowner was thinking, well, this is a good idea because it's, it's really dangerous in the front. And he did it without a permit or any knowledge. And this board ended up unanimously approving it because I, I think we all concurred that there was hardship in the property that warranted that. And, and I, I look at an after-the-fact request as if it's an initial request. And, but getting back to this, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to see any of the criteria in the land. I mean, I understand the homeowner, you know, has his own business and has an additional vehicle. That tends to happen with people with their own business. But, but that, why, our training is not a criteria for an exception, so that's where I'm at. And I'm looking to hear five other opinions on it to help me out.
Thank you. Mr. Mccarrick?
Yeah, I, I sympathize with the applicant, but, you know, I, I can't find support for the application. I just don't see anything about this property that distinguishes it from any other property in the area. The lot size is about the same. The positioning of the house is about the same. It's not set closer to the road than other homes in the area. I, I just don't see anything about it. It's, it's not necessary due to the positioning of the garage. It's simply that the homeowner, you know, wished for a wider driveway and created one. And, well, again, while I, I sympathize with the applicant, I, I don't think that's sufficient criteria to warrant a variance.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm, I guess I'm struggling with the application, but the, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought there. The, I guess what I was still thinking about, though, is the combination of, there are other homes in the immediate neighborhood that have similar extra-wide driveways. There is at least a shallowness of the driveway to the garage itself, so there's very limited multi-car parking available. I think it's, seems that even to do, even if the applicant were to have done the 24 feet, it looks like there could be maybe a second car, you could park the, one car front and back with one on the kind of alongside the drive, sorry, alongside the garage, and one in the front part of the driveway. There's, be limited, still limited parking overall for the home. So I feel like there might be some argument there that, to really get kind of the full parking needs met, that the wider driveway is perhaps necessary. So, but I'm, I'm interested in the rest of the board's opinions as well, but I, I'm not as convinced one way or the other regarding approval yet on this.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I, I also will echo what Mr. Shaw said as far as, we should say, like, the justification and reason why. May, there may be support for the application. I don't particularly, I guess, like the total width, but in thinking about that, what Mr. Shaw just explained too about the parking, I think there might have been some, some reasoning for something much more than 24 feet. Maybe not, probably 40 feet, but at this point, the other, the other thing I'm considering is, is, you know, again, we got, we have, again, the butter that is the most affected by it that is supporting the application. I don't know, I don't see, there's no testimony about any values going down in the neighborhood, and I don't know if removing, removing the driveway, the extra width that was put in would necessarily benefit anyone in the neighborhood as far as it being a problem. You know, the other thing too, Mr. Lionel, that you touched on, which is something that I always think about too, is we seem to have this issue in the city. There's an issue with the city where, you know, paving contractors are, some of them are just doing what they want to do or what the, what the homeowners are asking for. And I was wondering, you know, what's the best way to educate the public on that? You know, I was always thinking about, you know, doing some messages, what sometimes maybe, you know, entering the city. But again, I, I, I kind of feel for the applicant because, you know, a lot of us don't know that there are governing bodies and cities for, for all these types of things and buildings and stuff. So in some way, you know, ignorance is not an excuse, but, you know, again, sometimes when there's no knowledge and you're being told, here we go, right? So, so I'm, I'm on the fence with this one. I, I think there is some justification to, to keep the driveway as existing, and I don't see too much benefit in removing some of it. And again, I'm not going to get into, you know, should it be 36 feet, 32 feet? So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Mr. Nehealy?
In my short tenure on this board, we have seen quite a few of these, these type of cases come before the board where it's an after-the-fact. And I, and I go back to, to a discussion point that we had last, the last session, was how would we handle this if he had come to us ahead of time to say, here's what I want to do? And I'm, and I'm pretty sure that I would not have been in favor of this 40-foot driveway if he were to come ahead of time and say, hey, let's do this. I think we probably would have pushed him and said, hey, you got enough room to wrap some pavement around the side of the house, still, still meets, you know, the criteria of what we're trying to do here. Especially when I look at, at the yard where it is now, you got, you know, quite a few things going on there, a dumpster and, and a Conex box there. And I think we would, we would have pushed in that direction. I'm all about consistency. We, over the last few sessions, have consistently stuck with, with the criteria that the city has put forth at its 24 feet. We've had some folks who've come in here with some, some compelling stories of why they should be left alone, you know, with, with the, the larger driveways that they have already paved. And, and we did not vote in favor of those. So I think for consistency purposes, I would not be in favor of this variance request.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't view after-the-fact requests the same way as I do before-the-fact requests. And I don't blame the homeowner for not being up on all of the city ordinances, but I definitely do blame the paving contractor for deceiving the homeowners. They, that's their job. They really should know what, what the rules are. This particular request, I went and, and looked at it, and to me, it looks like a, you know, almost like a convenience store parking lot with these wooden posts. And it seemed that there was already plenty of parking for this house. The fact that there are other driveways in the area that are wider, maybe they got variances before, or maybe nobody called them on it, which happens a lot. That doesn't affect our decision. Like Mr. Nehealy, I would prob, I would not be in favor of this application if it had come before us, before the fact, and I'm not in favor of it now. So would somebody care to make a motion? And we'll see how this goes. Nobody's raising their hand. Okay. All right, I'll do it. And I'm going to make a motion to deny the application, and we'll see how the voting goes. Again, Mr. Nehealy is voting on this, Mr. Mccarrick is not. Make a motion on behalf of Stephen Fritz, address 105 Vermont Avenue, Sheet 40, excuse me, Sheet 4, Lot 25, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 40 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 16 feet of recently added driveway width. This is in the R9 Zone, Ward 7. The board believes this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, that there are no special conditions of the property that would require the applicant's benefit to be achieved by other methods. The board believes this is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We don't have an opinion on adversely affecting the property values of surrounding parcels that, whether it is contrary to public interest or substantial justice. But given that it does not meet two of the points of law, I make a motion to deny this area variance. Is there a second? Mr. Courier, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, ready to vote? Mr. Nehealy, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of denying the exception variance.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of that denial.
Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes not in favor.
Okay. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the denial.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor of the denial. That's three to two. And I'm sorry, your variance has been denied. There is a 30-day window of appeal. Please contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you have questions.
Thank you.
And we have another one. Owner is Lumnij, I'm, I'm sorry if I get these names wrong. Lumnij and Lime Brashori, you're going to have to correct my pronunciation. Address 28 Hampton Drive, Sheet F, Lot 167, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 197E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 40 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 10 feet of recently added driveway width. This is in the R18 Zone, Ward 1. Good evening, please give your name and address for the record.
Lumnia Brashori, 28 Hampton Drive.
Might just want to pull the mic up and down.
Sorry, I'm just very short. Good evening, everybody. Again, Lumnia, Lumni for short, Brashori, 28 Hampton Drive.
Okay, and you have 15 minutes. Walk us through your application.
So I guess we're repeating the same story that we just did. So we are requesting a 40-feet variance for our driveway to maintain the 10-foot that we have currently. That was done, again, unintentionally. We had, when we worked on our driveway, we had called, I had called myself in 2019 to ask questions about it. They told me as long as I didn't touch the curbs, I was fine to work on it with no permit. So we had a contractor pave our driveway, I believe in 2020. He did not tell us that we needed a permit. We had, to our knowledge, we didn't really extend it. We cleaned the edges a little bit. We didn't touch the curbs because there is, there was dirt at the side, and it was just a little uphill next to the post office. It was constantly freezing, constantly water sitting there. The area where we live is a very high-traffic, where families walk all the time. I personally fell on it, walking, going towards the mailbox. So when we told them that this is what we wanted to do, they said, yep, perfectly fine as long as you don't touch the curbs. So when I was talking to Mark Jennings, he had requested the guy's name, which I didn't bring with me, but he had called them, the contractor that did our driveway, and apparently he said that he did not know that the permit was needed. So we did not know that the permit was needed to do what we did. We found out after speaking to Mark Jennings. So we don't think what we did really is harm to public at all. In fact, I feel like it's, we feel like it's cleaner, it's safer for families and elderly people to walk on. We, our neighbors are very happy with what we did since we moved in. We don't think is really hurting any value towards any homes in the area. In fact, I think we had added to it. We've had neighbors that told us to continue working because our, doing work out at our house makes their house looks better. So I feel like everyone in the area was, was happy with what we did. They even asked how they could reach out to this meeting, so they're in our favor, but I don't know if they did, so.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. Mccarrick, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mccarrick will be voting on this case. Mr. Mccarrick, your question?
So, am I correct in that you're saying that the, you didn't actually physically expand the driveway? It was already that wide? You just paved it?
I think it was about 30 feet to begin with. We, I think it was around there when we looked at it before, when we had to take a look at this after Mark had questioned on us on our driveway. What we did was the edges next to the sidewalk was just very messy, and that's what we did was we thought that we just clean in that without touching the curb on the outside. That's the only thing we did.
So the actual curb cut didn't change?
Did not change, no.
No.
So was it unpaved before?
It was unpaved, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
In your application, and, and now you're talking about the freezing, the pounding?
I think you can see it on the picture too, if you can put it up, the old picture that I put on there. There's water that sits on the, one of the right corners, if you look from the house, towards the other, I, do you have the old one? Yeah, that's it. So if you can look where the, not where the trash barrel is on the right from me looking at it, but on the left, right there where the mouse is, that's where the water used to sit all the time. And we live in the area where there's, it's family-oriented area. There's a lot of kids, elderly people, so they walk through our driveway because that's where the sidewalk is all the time. So it would use to puddle there all the time.
So was it puddling on the street or off the street?
Right on the driveway, right, like, next to the sidewalk.
So on the driveway and around the, the grassy area, the dirt area, which then would over-freeze the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Sir, would you give your name and address for the record to just?
Ah, yes, I'm, I'm the brother, Harush Aliu. I live in Lishfield, 108 Talent Road, Lishfield, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
And then the driveway work that you did, how did that remedy the ice problem? And then the driveway work that you did, how did that remedy the ice problem or the pond?
Because it's all leveled now. I think the way the dirt was higher than the paved driveway, it was just always draining into the driveway.
Okay.
It's hard to see it on the picture, like, without zooming in.
Because, you know, most of us take a drive-by, you know, to do diligence and such as I did. You got a great-looking stone wall.
Thank you. That's, our neighbors are in love with everything. So that's why they're like, keep working because you're making my house look better, look good, so.
Great stone wall. But I was struggling to see, it wasn't apparent to me, I mean, there's a lot of hills. I'd never been quite up that way. You got a lot of hills there, too. But in front of your house, it was not, I couldn't tell, does the water run to the right or to the left? And I couldn't.
Kind of drains from the top. As you can see, the house kind of is a hill a little bit. So it kind of drains into the front, towards the front of the driveway.
And where the house is, if you look at the street going south, it pitches favoring the water pooling next to the mailbox and next to, basically on top of the walkway. And really, we haven't extended the curbs. It was removing that section of dirt and just paving over it.
Yeah.
Which now, clean the snow all the way out to the road. There's no snow piling up. There's no ice forming. And again, this was not done with any ill intent.
Yeah.
She called. We were told, don't touch the curbs. You're all set.
So just, on that note, like, previously, which I guess would be that picture.
Yeah.
There was no stone wall on either side, right?
It was block wall.
Block, okay. And I know Mr. Mancara asked this, but it's fuzzy to me. How wide, see like where that trailer is in that picture, right? So we're away from the curb. How wide was the driveway, you know, because I'm looking at, that's probably two, maybe nine, 10-foot-wide garage doors. I mean, I eyeball on that.
I think they're pretty standard.
It looks like 24 feet wide, maybe 30 feet wide. How much was it back from the curb? Now, because when you get up to the street, it kind of does this.
Yeah, so inside right now, I think, is 30, but at the end, where it goes out this way, that's why it's 40 at the end.
So I mean, what was, what your testimony is, it was 30, and it did this, and then now it's 40 all the way back?
Yeah. No, it was, it was, we widened it. That's when I called in 2019. If we can widen it where the trailer is, and they said we could without a permit, as long as we didn't touch the curbs on the front.
So the walls pretty much were replaced and went on top of where the block walls were. And that's why when we called and asked, they said, you're not really changing anything. And then when we asked, can we pave over a grass area that's towards the walkway, they basically stated, just don't touch the curbs. You should be fine. So the existing driveway, before we did anything, was well over 24 feet already.
Yeah.
And I think that was approved by the board years ago. So the house was purchased, what, 2018?
18.
So the existing driveway was well over 24 feet to begin with. What was done was removed, what was done was remove the block walls, put stone walls, and then paved over that area that you see in that video.
Are you done, Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yep, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, this might involve a little bit of help from staff and from yourself as well, but I'm still trying to, well, I guess I'm trying to understand a few things about the dimensions. It seems like the 40 feet is now where the driveway really aprons out, is that curb. And so the majority of the driveway is not 40 feet wide. It's pretty much 40 feet right at the curb cut.
Correct.
And then it quickly comes in, and then it seems to be getting somewhere around the 30-foot width. But I'm guessing from what you described, perhaps it, I mean, there's the city engineer, or whoever that was, noted 30 feet was what seemed to be displayed by GIS. So what I'm trying to figure out is, was it kind of like, maybe more of a straight 30-foot-wide driveway to the street? There was kind of like dirt and stuff, and there was a curb cut that was perhaps wider, but the actual, like, pavement, perhaps, was that more or less straight all the way?
Yeah.
From street to the?
It was kind of straight.
Garage. And so as you, then, when you repaved, it seems like maybe you filled in a little bit.
Yes, each side.
To where the walls were.
Correct.
So maybe that width is 32, 34 feet, perhaps, something like that. And then, but if the full 40 feet only exists right at the street.
At the end, yes.
So in many ways, the driveway hasn't changed that much. It perhaps is a few feet wider overall, and now it's definitely significantly wider just where it meets the street.
Yeah.
Curb cut wasn't changed.
So the difference between when we bought it and now is 10 feet at the end, and that's what Mark was looking at when I was talking to him.
And I think you kind of hit the nail on the head, is because of the dirt piles paved over, now it's 40 feet.
Okay.
The edges, the corners.
I think I have a much better understanding. Thank you. Mr. Falk, Ms. Courier, do you have any knowledge, observation of previous variances granted for this?
I didn't see anything of any previous variances. There was, I didn't see anything.
Okay, thanks.
I think when I talked to Mark, he said that it looked like what we did at 10 feet to it.
All we had is record from Mr. Jennings in DPW, that about 10 years ago, it was 30 feet wide. And we measure the width of the driveway at the property line. Everybody has different size aprons past the property line. Some of them go straight out, some are a little bit of an angle, and some are really more pronounced. There's not really a set standard in the city of how wide or long an apron is. It depends on the width of the right-of-way slope of the property, a lot of different factors. So everybody's house is different. All we have is basically what the applicant submitted, which, you know, they're stating it's 40 feet, and Mark Jennings said it was 30 feet back from, like, 2013. That's really all we have on it.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions from the board? Let's see anybody. Okay, may I have a seat?
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. We do have a letter from Barbara Bullard Coons and Edward Coons of 29 Hampton Drive. They've lived there for 32 years. We live across the street from the Brashori family. We have seen many good and bad changes over the years in our neighborhood. The purpose of this email is to show our support for the Brashori family. They are very nice neighbors and have done an amazing job of improving and maintaining the exterior of their property. The beautiful stone wall surrounding their home was built by the Brashori family. It is a beautiful work of art and enjoyed by our family and passersby. The driveway looks great, and my husband, Ed, and I support the Brashori family request for a variance. We are very fortunate to have the family reside in our neighborhood. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any? Okay, I will close the public hearing, open, public meeting. And again, Mr. Mancara is voting on this one. Mr. Nehaly, your comments?
That's, as one of the board members said, that's a beautiful, there's some beautiful walls there. You've definitely cleaned up that property very well. You know, it was interesting listening to the folks up here tell us the background of this, because, you know, we all did drive, I'm sure we all did drive-bys. We're all looking at it, trying to figure out the history of it. And it looked great. And I could not figure out, there was a lot of discussion about slipping, and then I'm like, where are they slipping? I don't understand, you know, what's driving the slipping and the necessity for a wider driveway. And it was definitely interesting to me to listen to these folks talk about the fact that there was a flare-out. It was a bunch of dirt at the end. They basically just cleaned this whole thing up, which is great for the neighborhood. I think we certainly seen from the one neighbor there next door, that folks enjoy what they're doing to clean up the house. I don't know what it looked like before, but certainly they're a positive to the neighborhood. That being said, on the flip side, from the last case we listened to, I'm all about consistency. And I wonder what I would have voted if they came ahead of time to go through, to ask us to go from 30 feet to 40 feet, and we're assuming it was 30 feet and going out to 40. On this application, I actually am in favor of this variance, primarily because they cleaned it up. They took out a safety hazard. Nobody wants to see children, mailmen, adults, anybody falling due to the ice. If ice, in fact, was pooling at the end there, and there was one picture there where they were alluding to the fact that you could see some of the ice on there, they're actually improving the public access around their house. So I would be in favor of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I did, I did a little digging to find out what this property looked like before, because right away, I understood that there was, you know, there might have been something there before. So I went back to National GIS, just to start off there, and in 2019, you can see what the original setup was. There was an existing block wall, and those, you know, existing one was there. And then, as you look at 2020, you can see it's under construction, and then 2022 shows it completed. And I just took some quick measurements, and I, you know, pretty much verified what they stated, what Mr. Jennings stated, maybe off by a couple of feet. What I did notice, one of the things I did notice is that property line, whether it's banners or not, property line, their property line is actually right in the middle of the sidewalk. All right, so I understand kind of what's going on there. And the flare again, I think was, there was always this curb there. I think they, like you said, they just cleaned it up. And so I think really, the driveway, what was usable at the time, I think, has remained the same for a long time. And I was able to find Google pictures from back in 2014, 15, and I saw the old driveway, and I understood right away what, it was this little dip there. And so I understood what that was, that she was there. But in general, I do agree, and, you know, and in my own way, verified what the applicant stated. So in this case, I'm going to support the application. And again, the end of this driveway is, to me, unique in a way that, again, there's an existing sidewalk where the property lines go into. So, you know, we're really talking probably, what's really changed is probably from their property line, and maybe the first five or six feet, it was just this pronounced curve, a curve that was put in, but I don't think has changed really the use of that driveway as it existed when they purchased the property and probably a little bit before that. So I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, also in support, I think, for a lot of the reasons already stated, and, you know, the questions I asked, I feel like there's very little overall real kind of true change to this usage. It's, certainly, the appearance is much better, but it's not like this, this has been like a major change from what was like a narrow driveway to a very wide driveway. A lot of it gets into where the measurement occurs and the fact that it's right at that flare-out, the property line. I do think, it seems like, again, as I can best understand it, that perhaps there is an overall two, three, four feet widening that's kind of filling in between the walls, but from an effective viewpoint of even from the street, I imagine that that still probably looked like that same dimension, even if technically maybe only 30 feet of it was paved, and there was a little bit of, you know, kind of puffer between there and the wall. So I think just from an overall appearance and effective use, I think there's very minimal change, other than fortunately, one that really has cleaned things up, and I think adds overall benefit to the neighborhood. So for all those reasons, I would.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
Yeah, I am also in favor. I was struggling a little bit at first, but I think the fact that this was already at least a 30-foot-wide driveway for the past 10 years prior to the time when the applicant's purchased the property, it does appear that the curb cut hasn't changed. And I can see the logic of, you know, they called the city, they did their inquiry. I can see why they got the response that they did, because the curb cut is usually the issue. So I think they were proceeding in good faith, doing what they thought made sense, and cleaning up an existing situation that both aesthetically and, I think, from a safety perspective, was less than ideal. So for those reasons, I would support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I guess I'm still struggling with the application. You know, I look at it like, what if, what if it came before us the first time? And I'm going to assume that the driveway was 30 feet wide. I assume we have a property that's a 30-foot-wide driveway, and an application that says, you know, I've got some ponding, and I want to clean that up, but I also want to widen it up to 40 feet, because that's what I think an original application would have looked like. And I'm not sure I tie those together. The correction of the ponding, I don't think is tied to widening it back all the way to the house, so I just feel those are disconnected, and that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sort of conflicted on this one. Unlike the previous applicant, I think that there is, and like Mr. Shaw said, there's not any great visual, visually, it doesn't look all that much wider than it was before. But certainly, it's been cleaned up and made much more attractive. There was not, this is not a request to provide additional parking, as far as I can tell. It's to resolve some of the puddling and icing issue. I'm still not happy about after-the-fact requests, but it does seem that the applicant at least tried to do the right thing. I'm a little bit puzzled with the response they say they got. If I understood it correctly, they did ask the city, but I'm not sure I heard that. Certainly, the paving contractors are known to dissemble about such things. But I think overall, I would be inclined to vote in favor of this application, even though I'm not, you know, as Mr. Nehaly said, consistency. You know, if it were really up to me, I would turn down all of these after-the-fact widening applications. But this one, I think that there is some benefit there, and I probably would have approved it if it had come before us before the fact. So I'm going to vote in favor. Any further discussion from the board? Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Again, I apologize for pronunciation. Also, I'd like to move to approve the area variance for Lumnij and Meilem Brashori, owners 28 Hampton Drive, Sheet F, Lot 167. Request is for variance from Land Use Code Section 190-17 E1 to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 40 feet existing. The request is to maintain an additional 10 feet of recently added driveway width, and this is in the R18 Zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Benefit cannot, benefits of the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance. Wanted to note, as a lot of discussion with the applicant and then by the board, that much, this driveway was already, again, 30 feet wide, so it was already wider. The, there was no change to the curb cut, and because of where the property line is in the area of the sidewalk, where the flare-out is, there had even been an effective use of a flare-out that was, was not with pavement, but with dirt, and effectively has been cleaned up by the asphalt. But likewise, the driveway has been framed by previously block walls and now stone wall, where it appears also that perhaps there's been some further widening at that part of the driveway to fill that in, but the actual effective driveway width overall has changed very little. There was also, as part of this increase... There was also part of this increase in the paving that was done at that apron area by the sidewalk, was also helped to rectify what was generally a safety concern in the wintertime with icing and causing that concern for use of the sidewalk in that area. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Again, I move to approve this area variance.
And Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
And Mr. Lionel votes in favor, so that's four to one. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please make sure you check with the city community planning department for any future renovations at your home. So, then thirty day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. So that's the last case for tonight. We have no re-here requests. We did receive an agenda for the next meeting. Did anybody see any regional impact?
No.
No.
I'm, everybody says no, I also say no. Okay. We have minutes from the December 13th meeting that I was not at. Anybody see any edits to the December 13th minutes?
No.
No.
Not seeing any, okay. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Point to a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, approve the minutes, oh, excuse me, yes, okay.
Thank you, everyone, have a great day.
All right.
Yeah, all right, so yes, we do need a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Shaw makes the motion to approve the minutes? Second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Okay, let's see, so, yeah, Mr. Nahili, you, you can vote on this one. How do you vote, Mr. Nahili?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Courier?
In favor?
And, well, actually, I'm going, I'm going to abstain and I'll let Mr. Mancara vote because he was there.
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Okay, so that's five to nothing, the minutes are approved. Now a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Seven forty-two.
Seven forty-two.
I will note that this is the time of year that we discuss officers for the forthcoming year. I have already mentioned to Mary Ellen that I am not going to run for any office for the coming year, so somebody else can have the opportunity. I don't know whether Mary Ellen wants to run for president, for chair again, she did not tell me. So we'll have to wait till next week to find out. I thought I'd let you know that I was not going to do it.
You can submit your nominations to us if you feel.
Sorry, say it again?
You can submit your nominations to us if you want to keep it anonymous.
Submit nominations?
Yeah. Nominate yourself or nominate someone else for a position.
And, and send them to whom?
You can send them to us.
Send them to us, okay, so.
We'll collect them.
So, okay, so send, send to Kate and Carter and if you're interested in the panel.
And only the members can be.
Only the full members, yes, can.
Unfortunately.
And all my apologies for being late tonight, sorry about that.
Oh, what time did you arrive?
I'm going to say.
Recording stopped.
It was just before, just before this.
I'll say arrive, I'll just say for the case.